We'll call the meeting to order with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our clerk is expected to be here, but in her absence, I'd be happy to entertain any motions.
I move to have Treasurer Rice be the clerk temporarily.
Support. Motion by Bills, support by Smith. Any other nominations for temporary clerk? Any other nominations? Seen none? Any discussion? All in favor of Treasurer Rice being temporary clerk for this meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Thank you, thank you.
You're welcome.
I'll be happy to entertain motions regarding the agenda.
How about roll call first?
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good clerk.
See, that's why we have you in there.
Would you do the honor of a roll call, please, of the board?
Sure. All right, Trustee Thering?
Here.
Clerk Cody is excused for now. All right, and Supervising Rick?
I'm here.
Treasurer Rice here. Trustee Smith?
Here.
Trustee Bills?
Here.
Trustee Brown?
Here.
All right.
All right, back on track now.
Yep.
Now to item four, approval of agenda. Happy to entertain.
I move to approve the agenda.
Support.
Motion by Bills, support by Brown. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion to approve the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Agenda's approved unanimously. I believe we have no presentations tonight, no public hearings. So that brings us to public comment. Public comment is restricted to three minutes regarding any item. I'm sorry, regarding items on this agenda. If you choose to address the public, please state your name and address for the record, and with that, we'll open a public comment at 7:02 PM.
I have everybody in mind.
Welcome.
Thank you. Dear esteemed members of Board of Trustees, thank you so much for giving me an opportunity to speak to you tonight. My name is Ye Seop Ro. I came to the United States four years ago from Korea. I'm a naturalized American citizen. I'm here to ask you to adjust my water bill over the last three months. Typically, my water bill runs about $150, but this time I receive about $600. Later on, I learned that there has been a leak in the pipe for a long time, and I suspect that it just happened due to over the wintertime, and the pipe got, you know, the frozen, and without, you know, the people's knowledge, it just, the water just gushed out. When I make the mistake, it usually comes from two sources. Number one, my ignorance. Number two, my negligence. Clearly, this time, it's my negligence. I think I'm a very good role model citizen. Even today, I don't have any speeding ticket and no criminal record, and everything is like as clean as a whistle. I'm also extremely financially responsible. Coming to United, these two suitcases with the two semesters worth of tuition, I think I pretty much established the American dream here. So as you can see, if you take a look at my record, tax bills and water bills, as soon as I receive it, I usually pay even tax, I usually pay in a couple of months in advance. In that regard, can you kindly forgive my negligence and reduce my bill, water bill, to $150, which is what I usually regularly pay? I want to make sure that from now on, that I will pay close attention to all fixture and leaks and pipes, you know, before the winter starts. Thank you so much for listening to my appeal, and whatever decision you make, I will honor and respect that. On a side note, I'm so glad that I came here, reason being, this is a so educational sessions. Now I can acknowledge and I appreciate what you guys doing behind the scene. And, you know, I appreciate that you just work your best in order to improve quality of life of the community members. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. For one, just for the record, would you state your address, please?
Yeah, 908 Mulberry Lane.
Thank you. And just in case this board has questions for you, are you planning on sticking around?
Oh, yeah, yeah, it's a very interesting topic. I want to listen, yeah.
Very good. Is that, is that address that you listed where you live, or?
No, I just acquired, you know, the small rental property. I live in, you know, the Deerfield Township.
Okay. Would you state that, that, that address then for the record, just so we have that? State that, state that address, please.
My address, which address? My home address?
The one you live at for the record. It's just, it's supposed to be part of our minute.
Sure. 3951 Haya Wafa Meadows Drive, 48858.
Awesome. Thank you. Thank you very much. I appreciate your story.
Thank you.
Anybody online?
No, there's none.
Seen no one online, no one else coming forward. We'll close public comment at 7:06 PM. No proposed closed session tonight, so that brings us to item nine on the agenda. Report boards and comments, current listed boards and commissions. I'm not aware of, we have full, full boards at this point. Anything from anybody? Moving on to April Activity Report, anything there? I have one question on that, if I may. Bear with me one second, my apologies. This is more of a protocol question. And it, it came to mind more in the ordinance enforcement activities, which is on page eight of the paper. And this one caught my eye, I think it was back in February, and I didn't bring it up then, but I noticed. So I had to go back and look at our old activity report and notice that this is percolated to the top of the activity report. And this one happens to be a, and I won't name the business, but a business that had removed their ADA parking spot, and the township wouldn't require that they put it back. So my question is, this was on, at least in February, I didn't go back further to see it, but some things percolate off and some things stay on. Is, is the idea that it, once something's dealt with properly by the township, that's how it gets off the list, or, just so I understand better?
We will typically list new cases, and there'll be some verbiage about what we're doing about them. And often, although maybe not 100%, the item will show back up again, and it'll say case closed. And sometimes it may not, and may not say case closed, and it would just be remaining on there if it was still under active enforcement measures.
That was my assumption, and I just kind of wanted to make sure that I understood the process. And I did notice in going back in some packets, the, you know, closed, it's been dealt with.
Right.
But I figured that was the process in which you went through what should be on and not be on there.
Generally, yes.
Because there are things that are on there that have been there for three months.
Yeah, like the one at Lincoln and Broomfield.
Good example. Thank you. Anything else on that? Planning Commission, EDA, ZBA updates by our Community and Economic Development Director, Mr. Nanny. As always, I'm proud to have you come to the floor.
Thank you, I appreciate it. A couple of things, our zoning Board of Appeals did not meet, although we had an excellent turnout for Board of Appeals members at the joint meeting. The EDA Board did meet on the 16th. They had several items on their, on their agenda. They took action to, to approve a contractor for landscaping work along East Becker Road. This is primarily to replace landscaping that was removed during the construction, and also to do some, do some landscaping improvements around the interchange area. That contractor's already started a small part of that project, and that was preparing the concrete planters that are along the corridor there with soil for flowers. They also approved a new three-year agreement with our current contractor for holiday lighting. And looking forward to that. One of the changes with the new contractors, we're moving to all LED lighting for those, those displays that will be up this, this Christmas season. They, they continued a discussion about a potential purchase of property for economic development purposes over in the Enterprise Industrial Park, and requested additional information on that, including appraisal of the property to just to understand what, what that value might be. And then they, both our EDA Board and our Planning Commission wrapped up their discussion of topics and priorities for, for the joint meeting that we had the next day, the 17th. The Planning Commission also had a meeting on the 16th. They had a couple of business items on their, on their list. They approved some amendments to, to a previous approved final site plan for a project on South Mission Road. This is a mini storage project that actually, the site plan was approved in 2022. It's under construction right now, and one of the way, the property was sold to a new owner that had a desire to change some things about the, about mainly the interests of the property that needed planning commission action. The, they also continued the discussion on the private road ordinance. It was an extensive discussion. They did choose to, to postpone action again on their recommendation with the intent to wrap up their, their review and recommendation at their, at their main meeting. The other items on their agenda, they, as I said, they had the discussion about the joint meeting topics, and then had a follow-up discussion about the results from the recent township survey. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That brings to item nine D, Trustee Thering?
Yes, sir. Just to add a little bit to the Planning Commission on the private road ordinance, we've had some very interesting discussion, and bottom, bottom line, I think one of our commissioners put it quite well, and we just were concerned with unintentional consequences. I don't think anybody has, looking at the ordinance, anybody has anything that just like, oh, I can't live with any of this. It's just more or less, per our discussions, we just want to make sure that there's no unintentional consequences. One thing I had mentioned, that the nice thing about this board is that if we did recommend to the Board of Trustees to approve it, and then we find a month later that, wow, you know, there's something that has a, an effect that we would not like to see, we have the ability to make a change. So it's, it's been, it's been a really good discussion, so I appreciate everybody on that board for spending the time talking about it, but.
I did watch your last meeting, and I appreciate the due diligence Planning Commission is putting in it. All good. Clerk Cody? Trustee Brown?
Yeah, I went to a regular meeting for the city, Mount Pleasant City Commission Monday. It was a 7:00 PM meeting. There was a, there was a lot of discussion at this meeting about a few different things. One thing was nice is a presentation to recognize the 2024 Mount Pleasant Citizens Academic, Academy Participants, and a couple, and they, I knew a couple people in there, and I just wanted to mention Tim and Amanda Lannan got certificates Monday for that. Kind of neat to see them go through that. It was, it was a kind of proud moment for everybody. There was several people that did get awards. Another one sitting in the back corner over here. He got to work going through that academy. It was, it was, it's kind of neat what City of Mount Pleasant does there. I, I really like that program that they put out.
What is it?
Well, they kind of, they kind of go through and show what the city does, and, you know, as far as governmental, their buildings and things like that. I haven't gone through the program, so I don't know inside now, but the little bit that I spoke with Tim about, it was, it was neat to go and see the inner workings of the, of the city. That's kind of what it is. Love that type of program. That was kind of neat. And then when they got down to business, they, they did approve the purchasing of a one-year access to Placer AI. It's a software program. And I just, I'll make it very clear, Union Township was brought up on the screen on this as a, as maybe partnering with them on this. This is something that may be coming around or been talked about, I don't know. So I just wanted to bring that up. Also, considered adoption for the 2025 goals and objectives also passed with that. Let's see, what else? The lands, here's one, so the AI, the Placer AI had a lot of communication. If you haven't seen the meeting, there were, there were some going back and forth on that. But the most, the, the, the new business topic that was really talked about was their managed natural landscaping ordinance. This is an ordinance that the city is, between the curb and the sidewalk, the height, the growth, everything like that, as far as what it can be planted in there, what natural, whether it's managed and how it's managed, was, was a huge topic of consideration at the Mount Pleasant City Commission meeting with a lot of people that plant gardens and do gardening for the city. So they're going back and forth on that. They're just in the draft stage now, but they're, I'll, I'll, I'll come back with more on that. There's, there's going to be a lot more conversation about that. That was about it, that was the main, main thing.
So they're going to regulate what you can plant on your own grass?
It's in draft session right now. I, I don't know, now, they do have an ordinance already, you know, for, for this, but this is, this is in draft, as far as they very well could regulate, they, they may not regulate. They're, they're talking about all that, and that's why there's so much communication on it, whether you got to have a draft to put in like a site plan on what you're going to do. Yeah, so there's a lot of conversation there, and you can, you can see why.
And all that would be in the right of way, which you're describing too, so, yeah.
Yeah, in the right of way.
So there's been given easements for those?
So, yeah, there's a lot of, it's, it's going to be, it's going to be, we'll follow that topic, see what happens there, so. That was the city.
Trustee Bills?
Nothing.
Trustee Smith?
The county on the 16th was a three-hour work session, so that was pretty lengthy. A lot of discussion on different things that are going on the ballot. Not going to get into each one individually, because I think it's just kind of, I don't want to misspeak or anything like that that's putting anything out there. One thing I would like to point out is when they considered the Isabella County Transportation Commission military request, it was stated that in 2023, there were 308,000 trips made in the county for that. And that has been down, and it's, but it's coming back up since COVID and stuff. So I was, one thing that really stuck out was the 308,000 trips. So wanted to share that little tidbit, and again, everything else was budgets and millages, and I'm not going to go into those details.
ICTC also buses a lot of students, right?
Yes. Yeah, I think they have like contracts for the different places and stuff that they go to, so. It was, it was a very interesting presentation. So that's all I have.
I thought you might report that the allocation meeting that we attended this morning.
Oh, I, we can talk about that at the end if you want.
Okay.
Well, we went to a tax allocation. Supervisor Milke and I were both there. We kind of like that type of stuff, so just in there to see how it, it happens every four years. And so just seeing the nuances, how the boards make, you know, who has to be there and represented and everything. So we'll, we'll get a little bit more discussion at the end of the meeting.
Treasurer Rice? I'm going to follow up just a little bit on that meeting, just a fun story. So I believe it was after the April 16th meeting that the county realized they had to have this allocation board.
Yes.
Convene and make recommendation to the county commission to move forward with whatever millages they might be looking at. And the allocation board is made up of various representatives of the county, which includes the county, but it also includes the City of Mount Pleasant, the Graship Isabella RESD, somebody that represents the townships, which by the way, my understanding of the ordinance is written, it has to be a supervisor. And then am I missing some representation?
One at large.
One at large. And so that, that was attended this morning, but prior to that, because of the realization that that needed to happen was not understood until late in the game. The, there was an emerg, after our joint meeting, there was an emerg, I don't want to say emergency, at the MTA general meeting, they were looking for a quorum of supervisors in Isabella County, nine of them. And so after the joint meeting, I decided to go attend, and it was in Denver Township. And I got there late, of course, because of our joint meeting that we had. And as I walked in, they were deciding that this was not going to happen, they were not going to be able to appoint a supervisor to the allocation board, because they didn't have a quorum. And I walked in, and Supervisor Pediak, did I say that right? Pediak?
Pediak.
Pediak, thank you. Who's the chair, said, I guess this is all done, and he looks at me, supervisor? And I said, Union Township, and the place stood up, and I got a standing ovation, I got to be hero for a moment. Obviously, in all levity. But, but that was the purpose of me going, and so we ended up being able to hold a formal vote and appoint Pediak. Am I saying it wrong? Pediak, excuse, to represent the townships today. And I thought he did a good job at the allocation board.
Sweet.
Yeah, so I just had to share that story, because I, like I said, I've never been a hero for a moment, but I got to be.
You're a hero every time we have a meeting.
And then I'd like to comment on our joint meeting, just partly for the public. Every year, the Board of Trustees hosts a joint meeting of the Boards of Union Township. So that included anybody that, that serves in a public capacity here, but primarily the Planning Commission, the ZBA, and our EDAs. And I was real pleased with the meeting. I thought it's helpful for me to learn a lot. I hope the other attendees did. I'm kind of curious if you all have some feedback that, on how we can make it better in the future?
I thought it was a good meeting.
I thought so, too. And I, shout out to staff for providing small snacks for, to encourage people to show up, so.
Those were hearty snacks.
And it worked well.
It worked well. So thank you to all who attended, not just from this board, but anybody that was there. So moving on to item 10 on the agenda, consent agenda. Happy to entertain any motions on this?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Support.
Motion by Bills, support by Smith. Did I hear that correctly? Just a note, too, in the consent agenda was the corrected Fox Meadows subdivision one and two special assessment district parcel certificate.
Yep.
And in your packet, you saw, I gave a new certificate for the correction. And who had warrants?
Everything's in order.
Any other discussion on consent agenda? All in favor of consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Oppose, same sign. Consent agenda passes unanimously. Takes us to our new business. First item, item A is Fox Meadow paving special assess, assessment resolution number two. I think the primary, uh, purpose here is to begin to set public hearing dates. Mr. Stuldryer, would you like to introduce this?
Thank you. And this is, uh, another step in a long line of steps from, um, the initial idea to actually approving and creating a special assessment district. Uh, you last acted on this item at your March twenty-seventh meeting. That was, uh, where you had received a formal petition from the residents of Fox Meadow Estates and Fox Meadow Estates subdivision number one, or I'm sorry, number two. And as indicated a couple of minutes ago, during that meeting, you revert, reviewed a certificate of validity, and there were a couple of minor corrections made to that that you've dealt with already tonight. The item before you tonight is to consider approving resolution number two. And this resolution tent, tentatively approves the Board of Trustees intention to make these improvements. It tentatively designates the Special Assessment District, and it sets a date and time for the first of two public hearings, which if, if approved, would be May eighth at our, uh, May eighth Board of Trustee meeting at seven P M. I'll also note that the, uh, resolution directs the staff to complete, uh, cost estimates, provide those to the clerk, and make available for public inspection these cost estimates and other, um, items relative to the, to the district. The estimated cost right now, and I will stress estimated, um, which includes construction contingency and the allowable administrative expenses that we estimate is estimated right now at one hundred and twenty-one thousand, one hundred and thirty dollars. Uh, there's an exhibit in your res, that's attached to the resolution that goes into more detail on that. I will point out that the original agenda packet, uh, we inadvertently did not include the resolution. That should be at your desk tonight as we sit here. And then finally, in terms of cash flowing, uh, the Union Township would cash flow this project, provide the monies upfront. There's three hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars approximately in the special assessment fund that's available for these sort of things. I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
Make motion if nobody has any questions.
I have one question regarding the, the fund. Based on this, this is, this would take roughly a third of that out?
Yes.
Ballpark. So if we were to have four more or three more like this, um, in the near future before we're found to be whole based on repayments, uh, what steps do we need to take?
Well, the board would have to consider whether or not we want to borrow money, extend the township's credit, um, what method that take. I'm not sure, local bank, some other method. But the township would need to borrow money to have available to provide the cash flow. And then the same process after that is, uh, the residents through their annual payments, pay the township back. It provides the funding then for us to pay whoever we borrowed it from.
I see.
Right now, we're the bank.
Right. So there's potential in that light that we might have to look at our, our rates of
Yeah.
our borrowing costs. Okay. Do you have a feeling for the ones that are out there? If we had no more, and not assuming this one at this point, but how long it would take for us to be whole again? I'm just kind of curious if you happen to know.
The last one we did, I believe, was the McGurk.
Yes.
Carriage, carriage lane.
Carriage lane.
McGurk was just before that. I do recall, I don't know why, that after we funded the money for the McGurk, we had a couple of hundred thousand dollars in there. And that was two or three years ago. We're now up to three hundred thousand. Carriage lane was not as big as this one nor McGurk's, but, um, I mean, it's going to be. Y'all know the size of Fox Meadow, give or take. So, you know, a hundred and twenty thousand bucks right there. And, um, the board sets the term for repayment. Uh, I think you're between five and ten years, I believe, is the policy or, and we usually make a recommendation on those as well in a subsequent resolution. We have money now. This was for, it's kind of a revolving fund that way. But I think it would be a whole different question as to whether or not the Township Board would ultimately approve a citizen-initiated special assessment if we had to extend our credit to cash flow the project.
That's kind of why I asked that.
Because we're on a hook then to somebody else.
Right, right. I mean, at this point, I, I don't feel like we're getting close to jeopardizing that, and it'll continue to grow back.
No, we're, I that's correct state.
Were you about to make a motion, you said?
Yeah, I'll make a motion for all, is that it? You're good?
Yeah, I'm good, thank you.
Make a motion for the adoption of Fox Meadows Estates and Fox Meadows Estates number two subdivision paving special assessment district, district resolution number two, and to set the date for the first of two public hearings to be held on May eighth, two thousand twenty-four, seven P M, for the establishment of paving special assessment district.
Support?
Motion by Brown, support by Smith. Further discussion?
I think this is excellent that we have this role, that we can do this, we can offer this. That financially, Union Township is set to be able to offer this to our constituents, our, our, our community, especially Fox Meadows. I mean, that's, it's going to be a huge improvement in there on that one, so.
Yeah, without it, these assessment districts, um, people have to pay everything upfront. And it would discourage that kind of, uh, improvement. Anything else? Clerk Cody, would you do a roll call of the resolution for Fox Meadows Estates? Subdivisions one and two, uh, that the two public hearings be held on the date specified?
Supervisor Milkie?
Yes.
Treasurer Rice?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Bills?
Yes.
Trustee Brown?
Yes.
Trustee Therry?
Yes.
Clerk Cody, yes. All yeses.
Yes, I was going to.
I did look in two thousand twenty-two, it's the last full year of information I have immediately available. We collected seventy-five thousand dollars for the year into the special assessment fund, to give you a sense of.
That helps a lot.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, moving on, item B, uh, request to waive high water usage charge, nine oh eight Mulberry Lane. Uh, Mr. Stuldryer, uh, would you like to introduce this?
Yes, thank you. Mr. Rowe was, uh, and I apologize, is that correct pronunciation? Uh, was here a few minutes ago during, uh, citizen comment for agenda items. I think he, um, recapped the situation, uh, very, very well. Uh, he spoke to the township staff over the utilities, uh, department. We had noticed that the, the water bill was abnormally high. We sent Mr. Rowe a letter to alert him to, of that. I think that came around the same time as, as his bill. And in conversations that the, um, water department had, staff had with Mr. Rowe, it was acknowledged that, just like tonight, that the, that his internal plumbing had sprung a leak, and, uh, they were not able to authorize any relief. And he then asked to speak with me a day later. I was, sat down with Mr. Rowe, uh, heard the same, um, uh, explanation. And so I don't think there's anything, um, else to add. I did agree, and I, I denied the, his request for relief as well because I don't have the authority right now to do that. And I did tell him that I would facilitate, like we do always, if he wanted to appeal to the, appeal my decision to the Board of Trustees. He wrote a letter, it's in your agenda packet. I wrote a cover memo about that. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions?
I think we had a similar case to this where, like, two, three years ago. And, um, I personally feel like if you own a property, you need to maintain it. So, um, we can't just charge somebody extra money and somebody not extra money. So I think, you know, you got to pay for the water, even if it's a leak. We didn't, I don't believe we waived it then. And I don't.
No, we didn't.
I don't support waiving it now.
I'm only looking at you, Trustee Smith. You look like you were going to say something, but if you're not, that's okay.
No, you know, it's just one of those situations. Yes, you feel bad for the homeowner and stuff, but, you know, precedent has been created, and you don't want to continue and change that. I think, you know, it's, it's a, it's a regretful situation, and I feel sorry for you, but I would also support the denial as well.
I, I don't think in, in the handful that we've had, two or three, that we have waived any, anything of that nature. And it's never intentional, but the, there was a product usage that was not due to an issue with the township. So it's unfortunate, and again, every one of them have been unintentional. But again, it's the product, so.
I, I think for those that have been on the board longer than I, um, I don't think, is there a history of ever, I mean,
I've never seen it.
That's always been the issue from my perspective is, um, opening precedents door. Because I usually, my heart tugs for these situations. But where do you draw that line? And, um, so I concur with Trustee Bills and other comments made.
I'll make the motion. If there's no further questions?
I'll make the motion to deny the request to waive a portion of the quarterly wa, water bill for nine oh eight Mulberry Lane, account number zero three one six four, in the amount of four hundred and forty-nine dollars and forty-four cents.
Support.
Motion by Smith, support by Bills. Everybody clear on the motion? Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion for denial, uh, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Sorry. I wish. I, I, I very much appreciate you coming tonight, and I really appreciated your story, Welcome to America. Don't let this leave a bad taste in your mouth.
But my question is that, uh, I don't know how long the water has been leaking. I'm kind of, at this time, it's just close to, uh, six hundred hours. I'd be happy to pay, as, as you made the decision. But I'm worried about the next day on the bill. So, um, if it's going to be your carryover, um, we are caught that the problem not too long ago. So I don't know if it's going to, you know, maybe next week it's going to be, uh, coming that way again. So could you please, you know, the, um, identify the water usage? And if there is any, you know, something wrong, immediately, you know, to inform any of us, to me, you know?
Is that something we're capable of, Mr. Stuldryer? Is that?
We, we do not monitor usage that closely. We don't monitor usage every week and compare it to the year prior, that kind of thing. I'm not sure when the item initially came to the attention of Mr. Rowe. I know why the Union Township started interacting with Mr. Rowe in early April. The usage period that's under discussion here, that was under discussion, was for the first quarter of the year, January through March. If the pipe has not yet been fixed, then it's still leaking, and there will be extraordinary usage from April till, April one till now. I would, and I'm guessing you already have, but you should get that fixed right away.
Yeah, we ought to fix it, yeah.
Okay.
And just to reinforce that, I didn't think we monitor at that level, which is why, but I thought I'd ask the question because I think we only do readings every so often, so we don't have that ability to have a granular usage.
When we do the quarterly billings, we do some comparison at that point, and that generated a letter on our initiative to the utility customer that it appeared to us that there was abnormally high usage. For all we know, it was intentional usage, you know? And I don't know, Miss Smith, can you add anything more to that?
We read the meters for the quarter, so we would have read that meter in, um, we would have read it probably the second week of March. So anything from that week until whenever you got the pipe fixed, was it a pipe that was leaking?
No, I, you know, um, probably at the end of the March, it was fixed.
Oh, okay. So you're going to have a couple of weeks that, that will watch, because we have to read the meters early, you know, to get the bills and everything.
Did you say March, man?
Um, probably the second week of March, right around that. We start reading during that time, and that's the first side of town that we read, so.
I, I appreciate you all jumping in to help.
What was, what was leaking? Was it a pipe or was it toilet or?
I, I did not observe. At that time, I was, uh, uh, out of town. Basically, I told, you know, they, they are very, um, hardworking, uh, people, and they have tough time to, you know, pay the rent, whatever. I said, well, for, for generosity, I said, I'd be happy to pay for your water. When, when the, you know, water leaks, you know, these guys, you know, probably if that comes from their own, you know, pocket, they could fix it immediately. Neighbor told us it has been gushing out almost like, uh, uh, two or three weeks. Yeah, so, you know, that was, uh, you know, the, uh, my mistake. I, I told them, I'd be happy to pay for you guys. They have three children, he drives a truck, and, uh, wife got the six, so that I offered a friend a gesture, but now he came to me.
Well, again, appreciate you coming here tonight, and, uh, I wish you well and the next step on that.
Yeah, I appreciate, you know, the most spending time to discuss this issue.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, moving on to item eleven C, uh, policy governance two point five, financial condition and activities. Mr. Stuldryer, this is you, if you don't mind.
Thank you. And this is the, uh, time of year, March of each year, where the Board of Trustees reviews the administration's compliance with your policy number two point five, financial conditions and activities. It's an annual, um, or I'm sorry, a quarterly review. The pol, the, the highest level policy wording, which I'll read, says that with respect to actual ongoing financial condition and activities, the township management team shall not cause or allow the development of fiscal jeopardy or a material deviation of actual expenditures from board priorities established in your N's policies. There are ten or eleven subpolicies under that, which I'm not going to read tonight. I interpret this policy that there are to be no expenditures made or incurred that exceed the budget in the current year unless it's an emergency outlined in, as outlined in policy two point five six. The manager, te, manager and the management team are restricted in making single purchases or commitments of greater than twenty thousand dollars. And that was just updated, uh, a little while ago by the board. And that we would, we need sufficient cash flow to maintain operations should there be a external shock to the system. Further, that all tax payments that are paid, we collect taxes from, as agent for other governmental entities, we are to pay those in a certain frequency, that all those are to be made according to state statute. That's my interpretation of this. It kind of follows the policy itself. I believe that's a reasonable interpretation. When the board approves the budget, it's left then to the management team to operate within those guidelines. And not only your guidelines, but federal and state statutes. And that allows the board to continue to operate and conduct itself as a policymaking body and let the detailed daily administration task fall to staff. There is data in your report. I'd argue that all our expenditures support global, your global ends policies. We have not used any general fund reserves for several years. All payroll and payroll taxes were paid timely. We do pursue our receivables on a regular basis as demonstrated by our fund balances. We have ample cash flow to maintain operations. There's a budget to actual report for all the funds in your packet. Based on the policy itself, the interpretation, the justification, the data presented, I would suggest that the administration, the management team complies with this policy. Be happy to answer any questions that the board may have. Seeing no questions, am I correct?
Correct.
I think this is one of the things I'm the prodest about, I'm sitting on the board, tell you the truth, when we start talking about what the management team, the manager and the department heads do on the financial conditions and activities in their own departments and what it does for the overall ends and Union Township. I, I don't know, I sit in other boards and I, I was in another board meeting in another county here a couple, couple of weeks ago and I was listening to what they had to say, not, not only trustee Smith has been telling us about it, it's about a county, but there's another county. It's like, I come back to Union Township, I feel.
Safer.
Really? That's my only comment. I just had to throw that out there.
We are blessed as a township and from the leadership from the past to today that allows us to be in the position we're at.
It's not an accident.
For sure.
It happens because, like you said, in the past and present, I'm sure the future. It's the actions of the people that we've had and have.
Right, and good fortune too.
That, hey, we'll take that anytime.
I don't know if you all know, short anecdote, I think it was twenty ten census, we're the fastest growing municipality in Michigan. And that's, that's a large blessing that we had that contributed to a township that's fiscally sound, right? It took good management too, but the fact that we have a growing tax base certainly played into that. So I'm reviewing this, was this report submitted when due?
Yes.
Yes.
I'm gonna say no. Wasn't it due in March?
This quarterly, isn't it?
It's reflecting the first quarter, isn't it?
Due in April. Covered the March period, my apologies.
Oh, I saw it on there and I'm like, oh.
No, you're right. It says March, it should say April.
Okay. I didn't check it against the calendar and I should have. So I'll change my comment on that then.
I would.
And I kind of figured we're going through, if you're not aware, we're going through the internal audit, right? And so I know that taxes our finance department quite a bit during this time. So I just figured this got put back on the back burner, but my apologies.
The staff shines through again.
Yeah. Don't I feel silly right now? Did the report lay out the manager's interpretation of policy?
Yes.
Yes.
I agree. Was it, was the interpretation justified itself?
Yes.
As always, I just want to point out again, I think that's our most important task is are we hearing from the manager what we think our policy should say? Did the interpretation address all aspects of the policy?
Yep.
Yes.
And it's a lengthy one. And then plenty of data here. Any disagreement with the data helping justify that policy?
Correct.
So I'm assuming, are there any areas that you worry about? Anything you want to change?
Not yet.
This is one of those sections, I think we, it's pretty solid, right?
Yeah.
Okay, we ready to go on?
Yes.
Could I speak to this?
Yes, you may. Yep.
There's, we, we've all heard before, you know, that the question, is our fund balance too large or too big? And that, that whole dynamic, we're collecting taxpayer money and so forth. There's been a couple of things that I think that are close to home that suggests that, we have a fund balance that'll cover almost two years of expenses without additional revenue. And I know that there's a couple of organizations around the area that would love to be in that shape. And one is close to home, we know about it. The other's been making, not as close, but you might not think that the Ann Arbor Public School District would be in poor financial shape, but they are. And their, their policy has been, I think fifteen percent of expenditures. Schools often have a much larger policy than that. But following the Ann Arbor School District, and that's not a poor community. They made a conscious decision to, to spend the money versus saving it for, for whatever reasons they had. And now they've come to find out that there was, I'll say, an error made in the accounting that cost them like a million and a half dollars and or more. And their enrollment has gone down since COVID due to people not happy with the video learning, which that particular school district has made a big push on. The constituents didn't really care for that, so they started sending their folks other places. Their enrollment has dropped quite a bit. And they are laying off people now and really scrambling around. And I always say that because the, it makes a lot of sense to have money in the bank when you need it. You don't know when you're gonna need it, but you're sure glad you have it when you do. So thank you for allowing me that.
Yep. I think that's been a debate from this board and previous boards is are we overtaxing or underspending? And we're at the lowest we can be with the one mil for general fund.
But a couple of things I'd like to bring up, it's not like we're not spending. I mean, look how much money we're putting into roads and sidewalks, those main things out there. And to follow up on the Ann Arbor, they got a twenty-five million dollar deficit on a three hundred and sixty-seven million dollar budget. They had increased over four hundred and fifty staff in the last four years, but then lost fifteen hundred students. But they thought these students were coming back. So it's just this, what I think Mark has provided us is that ten-year forward plan. And I think that's very instrumental and I think we're finding out, as the county's finding, that that's very instrumental for what they uncovered. But I think a little plug for Mark to come up with a ten-year plan to kind of make sure we are spending correctly and stuff like that, so we don't get into that Ann Arbor situation. I mean, I think their fund balance policy was fifteen percent. They're down to under five. It's just, it's just that mentality I just don't get, but I just want to commend Mark and for implementing that ten-year forward thinking budget.
Thank you. How do you make payroll at five percent?
They must, I don't know if they get monthly money from the state or if it's quarterly, I'm not sure, but they're just relying on that. I know they hired a bunch of virtual instructors because they were trying to get some of those people back. So they were, like literally set up a whole new school with staff and everything. It was all virtual. And so it was just, it was really amazing. And then just watching the, the head of the Teachers Association down there talking to the school board, it was, it was a very, you can find that, that was a very interesting comments that he gave.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to item eleven D, policy governance two point six, asset protection. Again, Mr. Stuldryer, this is you.
Thank you. This report is in your agenda packet, starting on page fifty-three. This is an annual review of policy two point six, asset protection. The top wording on the policy is that township management shall not allow corporate assets to be unprotected, inadequately maintained, or unnecessarily risked. Again, there's in this case seven sub, subpolicy items, or I'm sorry, eleven in this one, that I will not go through. I interpret this policy that the, to mean that the Board of Trustees expects to have adequate theft and casualty insurance, that we maintain the equipment that we purchase, that we invest in, that we keep it maintained, that we mitigate and consciously evaluate the risk tolerances that we have against, as part of, part of our decision-making process, that we account for funds according to the Uniform Budget Act and the generally accepted accounting standards, that the, and as important as any of that, that the organization's public image is not endangered or that the township fails to seek or appropriate or operate in a manner consistent with best practices. So, so we're, we're consciously evaluating risk as we go through decision-making. We're evaluating what this will look like to the outside, to the less informed as part of our decision-making. So that, that's how I interpret all of this. And I think that's a reasonable interpretation because in this particular case, as is many areas of the policy, it is quite well worded. It's specific and direct. And so how can you misinterpret, interpret it? There is data in your packet and in the report. We are insured by the Michigan Township Association par plan. There's an updated renewal certificate in your packet for the insurance year of November of twenty-three to November of twenty-four. We regularly maintain our, all of our rolling stock, whether it's cars, backhoes or whatever. In fact, just today, an email came across, there was a safety recall done on, issued for the Ford sedan out there. It's two thousand fourteen, I think. And we already have an appointment to have that taken care of next Wednesday. And that notice just came out yesterday or something. We do a lot of training around here so that we know what the best practices are. We keep up to speed on all our licensing, our safety training, whether it's myosha or first aid training that is required to be done for about half of our staff over on the utility side. We had the rest of the staff, where it's not required, go through that just a week ago, where you were, allowed us to close the hall for half a day. We had the whole organization in there for CPR, AED training. And we do attend a lot of, across the organization, whether it's the finance folks or the community economic development, utility managers, training on BSNA. They're all involved in their associations, some of them at board level involvement. You've seen Pickard Road, the EDA. They maintain those streetlights and all of that infrastructure. It's taken quite a beating in the last couple of years. But we're, we're keeping an eye on it. And the appearance of things, I think, makes a big difference to anybody that, you know, you walk into any building and it looks beat up, that sends a message. And we don't have that look here. I remember, it's just a little anecdote, shortly after I was, started working here, I was over in the Isabella Building and I don't know why, but I walked to the building with Kim, she was giving me a tour, I think. She noticed a little bit of chip paint on the wall that I didn't even notice and I would have never noticed and I wouldn't have ever cared about. And she, she noticed it and made it a point that she needed to get that resolved. That's the kind of attention that we pay to, you know, the trucks even out there in the parking lot, you don't see them dirty. So, and then finally, our last fully audited fiscal year FY twenty-two, we received the highest opinion that the statements fairly reflect the financial condition. There were no manager, management comments. So from where I sit, we are compliant with this policy. Getting happy to answer any questions the board may have.
You're proud of this one too, right?
From where I sit, I believe you are correct.
All right. Was this one presented when due? Yes, I think it was.
I feel you, you set us up last time.
Let's just stay quiet.
I'll say yes then.
Any objections to that? The interpretation is always important. Did the interpretation, was it laid out?
Yes.
Yes.
Was it justified in providing a reasonable interpretation of the, the policies?
Yes.
So they're justified and reasonable, I'm assuming from those comments?
Yes.
Do you felt like all aspects of that policy were addressed in the, in the interpretation?
Yes.
Again, lengthy one to cover. And then the data that managers just went through, some of it skipped over a lot of it. Do you feel that shows that we're in compliance?
Yes.
Yes.
Any comments on language or addition suggestions or deletions?
No.
I have one question. This is two point six point seven. It says fail to protect intellectual property. So from a business owner perspective, I get that. What intellectual property does a public organization retain? We don't retain any kind of trademarks or?
We don't have any trademarks, copyrights, patents. That's normally, you know, what I would think of is intellectual property. But there is also a portion of that that talks about protecting information and files from loss. But you're right, I, in my mind, an organization has four main types of capital. Some of you have heard this already, just had an employee, all employee meeting last week and went through this because I was highlighting the human capital side of things. Financial capital, human capital, intellectual capital, and then physical or financial, physical capital. And we're very involved in all of those with the exception of maybe intellectual capital. So you might want to consider rewording that or something.
And that, that's why I brought it up. I agree with your comment that it's important to protect information and files from loss or significant damage, but I just wasn't sure about the intellectual property part and how that applies.
Well, they might have that if we get AI with the city.
Well, they might have that if we get AI with the city.
Even that isn't, isn't anything in public though, right? I mean, all that we have really is public with the exception, I guess, that I would consider intellectual property.
Well, I don't know if we have, but.
That's why I wanted to ask the manager.
Would anything written by our attorneys?
I mean, if I thought about it a little longer now that you mentioned it, you know, client attorney privilege communication, you know, that could be considered intellectual property. There was something, oh, our survey. When we did the survey, in the agreement that was executed spoke to not divulging or that there was, in the contract, we were going to make the respondents confidential.
Yeah.
And, you know, so that's sort of intellectual property. You might go, well, how can we do that? Well, as long as I don't have that granular data, I don't need to worry about it. So I don't want it. I don't take it. So that's one way to protect that. I don't, you know, so.
Okay. I, I just was trying to think of it and obviously was hard even for you to list that. But I thought how you interpreted it was important. So I have no problem with the language in there at this point, especially after the discussion. So thank you. You all good?
Yes.
Yeah, I didn't have a problem with it in the first place.
I'm always a problem child.
We know. It's okay.
Can you tell us how you feel, Trustee? I think we're going to need a recess. That finishes our new business. Moving on to extended public comment.
Wait a minute. What about one more?
Did I miss? Oh, I did. Thank you. I was just testing y'all.
I'm looking at it.
You're skipping over our part.
Yeah, and this is our part, right?
Yeah.
Forgive me. Policy Governance three point four, Agenda Planning. This one is in our wheelhouse. I'll just briefly read it for public purposes. Just the top headline on this. To accomplish its jobs with a governance style consistent with board policies, the board will follow an annual agenda which completes a re-exploitation of ends, policies annually, and continually improves board performance through board education and enriched input and deliberation. And then there are some sub items there that illustrate details on how we are supposed to accomplish that. So with that, let me ask the questions. That's for us. Looking through this, I'm sure everybody has, do you feel like we're in strict compliance or not?
Yes.
Any objections to that? I would agree. Anything you feel we can do to improve in being compliant, in more further compliance?
No, we do our ends well in advance and we get everything taken care of, so.
And I'm looking forward to doing those again this year.
Yeah.
Maybe this is something for our ends discussion. But at the Planning Commission, at Public Comment, one of the comment, or a comment was made about giving a voice to business owners who either live or not live in the township. And I believe in twenty twenty-three, Mark, you might have met with some business owners. Or I don't know to what capacity that was. The other question was, do, and I did not know the answer, but does somebody who owns a business but does not live in the township, are they able to run for office?
You have to physically live in the township.
They have to physically live, okay.
Registered voter.
In the township.
I see. Okay. Well, then that answers, I mean, I didn't, I didn't want to just say yes or no. But, but maybe that's something for the ends in the respect of, I just, I know in the past, I believe the township had, has had some discussion with business owners. But I just couldn't recall what that was.
Yes, I had at least two meetings, roundtable type of fashion with several business owners. They were primarily builders, a little bit of the development side, but I think primarily builders, some did both. So we had that, we had that opportunity. We met at least twice. I will also say that we routinely, Mr. Nanny in particular, routinely goes on business retention visits. And our, so he goes out during the day and walks into the business office. And some are by appointment, some are just drop-in, trying to understand what their needs are. And I think that the EDA is, most of those board members are business owners, small, some small, others medium, others large. There are some business owners on the Planning Commission. We can always do more.
I, I knew that we had something, but I just didn't want to just start rattling things off. Thank you for that. And I, and I let the gentleman know who made the comment that I would, I would bring that up in a meeting because I think it's, I think it's important that everybody gets heard, so.
We've started a program in the EDA and I think the West EDA as well. And I was lucky enough to be present. We awarded a, we have a grant program. And I was there with the chair of the EDA and the business owner to deliver a five thousand dollar check to them. And they spoke very highly of the township and the EDA.
Now that you say all that, I remember, yeah.
Pouring down rain.
Yep.
Pouring down rain.
That's, I appreciate you reminding myself and everybody that that is definitely a thought all the time, so.
Maybe what would be helpful, I would have interest in what I'm about to say. If, if other board members would, maybe it's something that could happen is if maybe staff can give a presentation of what these business visits look like and reception, just to get a better feeling for how we might be able to support the organization in regards to that. And to have a better feeling for what there's, what we think those businesses are seeing from their perspective.
If a business were to call in and say, hey, could you just stop in sometime when you're rolling through, has that happened? Or if they did, would that be something you would, within a reasonable amount of time, you know, when you had opportunity, stop in and say hello?
Yeah.
That's great.
Mr. Nanny, would you like to give some real world examples of what you do?
That is the case. First of all, our office regularly hear from the business media, obviously with questions about either a project that they may be looking at building addition or something. And so we regularly answer those questions. We meet very commonly with, with folks that are considering projects. They might be at the kicking the tires stage, or they might be a little further along in, in planning a future project. And we're happy to meet with anybody at any stage, if they have a napkin sketch or if they have a more detailed concept plan for something. Those meetings happen regularly. They happen here, but they've also taken place on-site where that works better for, for the folks that are involved. The, for my part, as was mentioned, I do visit with our businesses periodically. Some more often than others, but I do that either on my own or also participate in the business retention program that our Middle Michigan Development Corporation has. So when they have appointments scheduled for businesses in the township, I'm invited on with those. And I'm part of the planning ahead of time for those. The, those visits often include a representative from state as well from the Michigan Economic Development Corporation. And, and those kinds of visits, especially those generated by the Middle Michigan Development Corporation, are tended to help those businesses understand what resources are available. There's, that's part of the reason the state representative comes along as well is to help them understand what's possible in terms of potential economic development support from the state of Michigan. There's a number of programs, often people are simply not aware of. For my part, where we have businesses in our, our east or west EDA district, I do the same thing in terms of letting them know what, what our EDA board is working on and show them what the grant program that's available, if there's a project that fits, fits that. But mostly we're there to answer questions. I've found that there are always questions, you know, because we're in the room. They, oh, you know, I've been thinking about this, or I've been wondering for a while about. And so it's a great opportunity to be able to, to simply share information about the township, connect them to the resources. Sometimes it's as simple as connecting them to our website. They want to know about X or Y. Well, on our website, you can find that information. Or on a different website, Middle Michigan Development Corporation, Chamber of Commerce, wherever that may be, we can help them connect them to the, to the resources they need.
I will say, my business, which is in the city, has been the recipient of the MMDC annual. I'm not, I don't always encourage them to come annually, but I've been through many of those meetings. And you wouldn't have been there, of course, because I'm in the city, but those are always, always information. A lot of information comes out of those that I look at.
How many employees do you have?
Just three right now.
Geez.
I had twenty-three and I didn't like the babysitting.
I have three and I've been there for thirty years and I never got a visit. Just saying. Not the right industry, I guess.
I'll talk to Jim.
Don't talk to Jim. That's okay.
Thank you, Mr. Nanny and Mr. Stuldryer. That's.
That's helpful.
That was hoping to, I mean, that's, that's what I thought, but I think it's just nice to hear. Thanks.
Awesome. Anything in this policy, did I get through? Forgive me if I got off track a little bit. We had a light agenda, so I didn't feel bad getting off. Did we not cover something on this? We covered everything, right?
We're in compliance for.
Yeah, I got that part. Anything, I guess the important question I'd like to ask, is there anything in the policy that we need to expand on, add to?
No.
I tend to agree as well. Moving on then. Now I can do item twelve.
There you go.
Extended public comment is restricted to five minutes regarding any issue. If you do address the public, please state your name and address for the record. And with that, we'll open up extended public comment at eight seventeen PM. And I'm assuming still nobody online. Let the record show, nobody was online, nobody coming forward at this point. So we'll close extended public comment at eight seventeen PM. That takes us to item thirteen on the agenda. Manager comments. Mr. Stuldryer?
Thank you. And I do have a couple tonight. One, just to let everybody know, today was our assessor Jill Peters' one-year anniversary with Union Township. I congratulated her, of course, this morning, and she indicated that she was very happy to be here. And that's always good to hear. Also, a promotion that I've mentioned in an email, but publicly, we had, the board had approved an additional assistant water operator position during the budget time. And we went through the hiring process. Internal, external candidates were interviewed. And I'm happy to announce that Nolan Okert was offered and accepted the appointment. He's been with the township since two thousand eighteen, started out as a laborer and has now had three or four certifications. So he's now, for the most part, certified for the position. This position requires two levels of certification. He has more on the S side than is needed. Still needs a little work on the D side. They have a year to do that. No question that he'll accomplish that. So I think that's, that's a pretty good story. And so when you see Nolan around, congratulate him. Again, another opportunity for some career laddering, career opportunities within the organization. Last week, I held, not as often as I'd like, but I held an all-employee meeting. When I first got here, I was doing those about once a year and then kind of got away from it, COVID. And then it occurred to me at our last holiday party that I like to do this more often. And then we happened to be all together during our first aid training. And I thought, well, this is why I like to do it because it's just fun to be around everybody. And we'd already had a meeting scheduled, so we held one again last, I think it was last week. And then just to follow up a little bit, if I may, on Trustee Brown's comments on the Pacer, Pacer AI. Pacer, and everything Trustee Brown said is accurate. We are, I had committed to be a partner in that. This is a one-year trial period. It's the city of Mount Pleasant, Union Township, Mid-Michigan Development Corp., Convention Bureau, and the Chamber are all putting in money for this. There's, you can only have one account, so we're all paying for the account. It's going to be housed at the city. The city entered into the agreement with the company. And then there's going to be an agreement between the participants, the parties I just mentioned, that will cover how we access the data. Pacer AI, and I know I'll get this all butchered up, but they use cell phone data and they're able to track where we come and go anonymously. But we have an interest in it. The area has an interest in it from an economic development perspective. We'd be able to ask a question such as, you know, how many people from this area, say the Mount Pleasant region, travel to Midland and where do they go? Do they go to Best Buy at Midland? We can ask those kind of questions and the data can provide us information for those kind of questions. So it might, you know, prompt us to reach out to a Best Buy if we see a lot of volume going there, those kinds of things. It's, it's new. But we're in it for a year, our share. And we have CMU interns that are going to help with querying the data, at least initially. Our expense will be in the neighborhood of six thousand dollars for this one-year trial period. So we'll see where it goes and see what we want to do, either as a standalone or some other method. But the pricing structure of Pacer AI does not allow for multiple users under one agreement. So we've talked about it. We may, you know, reserve a day and we get to city where we go over there. Or we'll figure out some way to, so we can get a feel for it as well. And it may be as simple as we just send our questions over to the city, their contact person, and they, within a reasonable amount of time, respond back. Thank you for bringing that up. I just don't want to, I would have brought it up at some point. I hate for you guys to hear about things before I tell you. I just wanted to add a little bit of meat to that.
You okay if I add to that?
Please do.
I've been in one or two meetings where discussion of this has happened. And one, my memory is that the Convention Bureau was involved in. And so one of the things they wanted to be able to ask was people that come into town, where are they going? How long are they staying? So let me know. I think a good outcome from this potentially is driving, what are the development needs here? What are the, what attracts people? What makes people leave town, as you indicated? Is that reasonable interpretation? That's kind of how I had heard it when I seen.
Like, do we need a Best Buy here? Like, do we need a Best Buy here?
Are their policies kind of set in place on how this data is going to be handled? Who has access to it? Because I could see something like this as being very informative to business owners? They're just going to stay at the municipalities for right now? Because it, it just seems like this could just spread out and be so valuable for so many different groups.
Right, and that's why we have the chamber.
Okay.
At the table.
Okay.
And it's, it would be, we've, we've had some discussion, not in real detail, but I would expect that the members of the chamber are going to be, are going to become aware of this opportunity and have it explained to them so that they could take advantage of it coming up through the chamber's involvement with it.
It's going to increase participation in the chamber. And I saw Clerk Cody giving some look about being tracked like that. I think if I remember correctly, you know, all these apps that you download that are free, there's a certain thing that they call it, and I don't know what they embed into these apps, that that's what is being used to track. It's not like it's anything on your phone, it's in those apps that you have on, it's.
It's like a trigger.
Yeah, there's a weird, there's a terminology, I can't remember what it is, but, so, you'd have to leave your phone in the car. If you don't want to be tracked in the store, leave your phone in the car.
I think what's important there is, we're already being tracked.
Exactly.
It's just, in this case, these units are beginning, want to take advantage of some of the information that's there.
Oh yeah, and I'm not trying to say that, anything to be afraid of, but it's, that's what it is.
And it is anonymous data that's.
Oh, 100%.
You look concerned. I think, are you all set?
So, thank you, yes.
Lisa's like throwing away my phone.
That brings us to item 14 on the agenda, final board member comment, Trustee Brown.
Lisa, we're going to know exactly where you go on. I'd just like to reach out again, and the bandage you mentioned, Jill Peters and Nolan Oakert on, on their advancement in, in Union Township, I think that's, that's awesome. One year for Jill and then Nolan worked his way up. That, that, that's exactly what, what we love to see in the organization for sure, to hire within like that. No, I just wanted to reach out to those, link them up one more time. I think that's excellent. Excellent news, that's a great story.
I like Jill. I'm glad she's here, because she really did a great job on that seminar and really enlightened a lot of the citizens about what the tax assessment is. That was really cool. And another note, I have four species of sunflower growing in my kitchen. I'm very excited about spring. And I've been notified that at this particular meeting, almost all the board, board members cannot be heard onto microphone. So, just letting you know that. So make sure it's down, I think down below your mouth, isn't that where it's supposed to happen? I'm just adding, just passing it on.
At, at your mouth, right?
At.
At.
Oh, at. So right there.
So like, you're basically eating the mic, but don't eat the mic.
Just letting you know what I, what I've been advised already this night.
Trustee Smith?
I'm going to defer time to you, so if you want to talk about the tax allocation board further, I'll.
And feel free to jump in when I do.
Will do.
Treasurer Rice?
Um, well, the only thing I have, I've been meaning to mention this, and it just hasn't happened, but after a lot of thought, I am not going to be running again for treasurer. So it's bittersweet, but I know it's something that needs to happen, so. I'm continuing to, you know, still be the treasurer until then, but I will not be running again, so.
We still have time with you.
Little bit, yep.
Clerk Cody? Trustee Theryn?
I've been meaning to ask this for a while.
Uh-oh.
Is Norm involved with the Saginaw Chippewa Indian tribe on behalf of the township? At one point in time, this might have been two years ago or more, where we discussed where he might attend meetings on our behalf. And is that something he's still doing, or?
No, is a short answer. Long answer is, at that time, because he doesn't have any official, official capacity, and we didn't give him any, we also appointed me as the liaison.
Okay.
And through conversations, he felt that, and I don't want to get into, trying to think how to speak to this, he didn't feel his role in not an official capacity would be beneficial to the township.
Sure.
And so in lieu of that, I think he would love to do that, and probably the way to do that is to give him more of an official title than we did, so that that can be relayed to the tribe, that, so when he's there, he has an official title, and therefore authority on behalf of the township. I don't know if that makes sense at all, but, so he hasn't really been involved, although I think he'd like to be.
I just knew it was.
But I try not to miss.
Right, I, I knew that, I knew that was a concern of ours at one point in time, and we had talked about that, and I didn't know if we actually, couldn't remember if we had acted on it, but we, I hadn't heard anything from him, so I just thought.
I did mention to him, I'll make you my deputy, and that way.
Well, that's a possibility.
There you go.
Does that answer your question?
Absolutely.
Are you good?
For sure.
I have three short things. Comments that, that we hear from staff, I've had the opportunity to be here recently, but I want to say it publicly. Had the opportunity just to be here, and I wanted to share with some of those staff members when I had the opportunity, so this was not all inclusive of everybody, but it should be, that a lot of the words of praise of the staff that this board gives are genuine, and it's not, we're not showboating, we're not grandstanding, we're not doing anything that we don't feel is true. And I know that because I hear these same praises in, in conversations, one-on-one. And I thought it was worth relaying that. So as I have opportunity with staff, I'm going to continue to provide that message from us. Sorry?
Thank you.
Yes, great.
Second meeting in May, I'm scheduled to go to Las Vegas to see Adele.
Oh, boy.
And I'm flying back that.
I'm glad you're going to miss it, I mean, that's a bummer.
I'm flying, flying back, flying back on that Wednesday, which is our meeting, and I get back in Grand Rapids at 3:00. So I'm just giving you a heads up now, I have every intention of being here.
You're going to be delayed, I guarantee it.
I, I'm worried about that, so I will communicate with somebody here, whether or not, you know, if I'm not going to make it or if I'm going to be late.
Just give me a call, you call me.
At 7:05.
I'll call my people.
Oh, my God.
And secondly, just to follow up a little bit on what Treasurer Rice said, thanks for serving, I'm looking forward to the next, what is it, about six months, right, roughly? And I just want to say thank you to all the candidates, not just for Union Township, but across Isabella County that decided to throw their hat in the ring. Win or lose, I'm grateful for everybody that participates in that. So thank you to all of you for that. And then lastly, the meeting this morning, briefly. So essentially, the allocation board acts as an advisory board, that's how they, they see, see their roles, an advisory board to the county commission. They approved essentially a, moving on with what's been done in the past, as far as millages for RSD, township's at 1%, am I missing anything on that?
And then the school districts, you're given that 7.71, I believe.
One of the concerns, this is probably one of the reasons I went, I also went because I was interested in it, and I think same with Trustee Smith. But all this is leading to the county asking for renewal of their millage, ultimately. And, and what that looks like is obviously in, that's their responsibility, and so I'm not commenting on that. But if it were to fail, I've asked the question, what does that mean for our county, and what does that mean for the townships, including us, right? Because this is our primary responsibility. And I think what I learned, and this is probably where I'm going to need help, as I understand it, even if the electorate doesn't choose to renew, the Hadley Act will provide nearly all of that millage to the county, and therefore still come down to the other taxing entities, like the schools and the townships. And so we would be largely whole in that light.
As a township, yes.
Yeah. And that was my fear, and I was trying to get a better understanding of that, and to be honest, I may be misspeaking on some of this, because this is stuff that I don't know very well, this is all new to me, and I think we were both learning a lot. Would you like to comment?
Just typically, like, there's some counties that do tax allocation boards every four years, that way you can avoid the Hadley rollback, some do 20 years, that way they don't have to go through this. But then they're subject to Hadley a little bit more, so it all kind of balances back and forth. On that, this was the first time I've been through the process, so it was enlightening to me, and I think a lot of the members there, you know, when, went to the meeting with the, the county, you know, the question was brought up at that point, that they couldn't act on the, putting the millage on the ballot until the tax allocation board met, so it caused a lot of discussion on the backside. But it was done, it was, you know, there's 15 mills spread out over the county, and they just divided it up based on need. So Petty Act spoke on behalf of the township, saying, you know, township's got the one mill, we're being, you know, good with the money, and so therefore we don't need anything more. Paul, I can't remember his last name from the RSD, was there. He spoke on their behalf, saying, there's that, so there was really no issues, they were just making sure that it was done in a legal way.
So in four years, we could potentially go.
Every election year, every presidential election.
And with that, our business is complete, and I'm happy to entertain motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Motion by Rice, support by Brown. Did you have a question?
No.
All in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. We are adjourned at 8:36 PM.